So, Mr. Epperson, Senior Executive aide, has requested a closed session hearing regarding his dismissal pursuant to MCL 15268-1A. That's why we're here. Legal counsel for Human Resources has been conducting an investigation at the request of Mr. Epperson due to potential claims against Ottawa County that would be needful. Although HR legal counsel has not provided a written report, he has explained it is in the best interest of the county to get a release of claims from Mr. Epperson. Furthermore, HR legal counsel has indicated the exposure for any such release and severance is likely less than the exposure for lawsuit legal fees settlement. If a lawsuit in the future occurred per HR legal counsel, the potential outcome could be one year of additional pay for damages. It'd be sort of just in the realm of what is normal to be expected, plus attorney's fees and county's attorney's fees, notwithstanding a jury verdict separate. This means the exposure is estimated approximately $90,000 for potential damages. That's what he's paying. Plus possible attorney's fees, anywhere maybe between $25,000 to $75,000, who knows? HR legal counsel indicated the Board of Commissioners should consider kind of a clean break to clear any and all claims by using a severance and separation agreement with Mr. Epperson. He then provided a draft of a release of claims agreement, separation agreement. And now you know why Mr. Epperson is not in the room even though he had requested dismissal. Because to include him at this juncture would require our deliberation about him before there's any time for the Board to talk, have discussion, come to consensus. We don't want to negotiate against ourselves.
Could you just read that first paragraph, Joe?
Sorry?
Read that first paragraph.
That he requested a closed session?
Yeah, I guess, just, yeah, go ahead.
I'll just go back over it again.
Okay.
So, Mr. Epperson requested, has requested dismissal. That's where we're at.
He has requested dismissal?
Yeah.
Okay. What is that?
He's been working, he's been working with our HR's legal counsel for a couple of months, I believe.
Okay.
Due to issues that have arisen over the last year, year and a half, and...
I guess, I'm struggling with the term "has requested dismissal."
He wants to be terminated.
Why is he, I just quit?
Yeah. He wants to be terminated and he doesn't want to sue the county. So right now, he had, so let me reread it. So, so there's been an ongoing investigation at Mr. Epperson's request against the county, right? Due to claims he has against the county.
Just, if we get this straight, because he obviously had time to, you know, put this together. Mr. Epperson has claims against Ottawa County. What are the nature of...
That he would like to settle in more amicable manner.
But what are the nature of those claims?
There was a laundry list.
Do we have that?
A lot of it stems directly from issues he's had with HR.
Okay, but do we have that list?
No.
No. Okay.
So...
Where is HR?
Yeah. Where's Mr. Wolf?
They are not here because of the nature of the investigation.
Can we call him?
Because, no, because it is against HR.
His claims are against HR, okay.
He was hired in on one job description.
Somebody's got to elaborate, I'm sorry.
He was hired in on one job description and the second job description with different role requirements was released to Sarah Leach and the Holland Sentinel.
Also, I believe his personal information as well.
And, yes, attached to that was his resume, which also had his personal identifying information.
So what you're saying, what you're saying, just, I mean, we don't have the benefit of, you know, your knowledge.
Right.
What you're saying is that the, his claims center around the job description? Is that fair to say?
The job description, but then also subsequently what transpired, that he was not qualified for the role of the five objectives that were required. He was only qualified for one. There's a difference between a preferred master's versus a required master's degree.
And, but why, I guess, why is the suit with HR, did HR...
Because HR is where the leak originated from, Mr. Zalstra.
There's only Jordan who had the applicant, you know, his application and what he had submitted, and then Human Resources.
So somehow...
Can't say who did, but it got to, it got to Sarah Leach and the Holland Sentinel. And then he received subsequent, you know, news articles, condemnation and comments. I used to just cringe when I would hear, because his back is to the people in the audience who are accusing him of not being qualified for his position repeatedly, and he has no way of defending himself at all.
So that is a part of his claims. There are other claims as well, such as things relating to Mr. Gibbs and his treatment, hostile work environment.
I mean, it would be helpful to have this list so we can understand it, but I guess we don't get that furnished to us.
That is part of the HR investigation.
But I mean, apparently there's knowledge in this room that we don't have fully.
That's why we're here.
Okay.
And I called him, just so you know. That's why I had, I called Jordan and spoke with Jordan.
About?
About this, about this particular subject, about the agenda item. So that's the only reason why I know more.
Okay, but I guess what I'm saying is there is knowledge that is not completely...
So my goal here, my goal here is to try to share that, the current information, which I only recently received, and see if we can take care of this situation. There's also the elephant in the room that it would probably be ideal to take care of it before the end of the year. So...
Why?
It, why?
Yeah.
Would you like to elaborate? Maybe make a guess?
What's going to happen in January?
If not, then I won't, I won't dignify your question.
Well, I guess my first question, though, was what are his financial damages?
I will reread what I wrote, what I read earlier. If a lawsuit in the future occurred, the potential outcome for damages could be one year of additional pay.
And this is Nate's assessment or whose assessment?
From Nate Wolf, HR legal counsel.
Okay.
Plus the county's attorney's fees to defend, and then potentially if there was any award, it could also include the attorney's fees spent to pursue the county.
It's not evidence, though.
Is Mr. Wolf available to...
He's not, no. And he doesn't have a report, and honestly, I don't think he wants to create a report stating what would likely need to be stated.
Even though it could be kept within closed session minutes?
We've learned that that doesn't always stay within session minutes.
Right. Yep, so I'm relaying exactly what he has told me. He has recommended that the county pursue a release of claims from Mr. Epperson. You kind of have two paths. We pursue a release of claims and thank him for his service and say goodbye to him on January 1, or we don't, and we just roll the dice and see what happens.
So what's the release of claims look like?
So we have that, so I have a draft. I'm going to hand it out to everybody. I had counsel print it. In the draft, it has five main points, and you can have as much time as you want to look through it. It's really not that long. Employee would agree to completely waive any and all claims against Ottawa County, including agreeing not to sue the county in the future. Employee's last day would be January 1. He'd be offered at least the Board's discretion, but offered severance of six months. Any open investigations performed by Ottawa County at his request would be hereby terminated, and that he would receive some form of payment as determined by the Board. And the agreement includes a clause for no admission of liability between the county and Mr. Epperson. So, last paragraph in my memo is, "I would recommend the Board approves some sort of severance for the release of claims for Mr. Epperson to resolve and eliminate any potential claims he may have against the county and provide a smooth transition for next year without any additional litigation, controversy, or political firings, which is in the best interest of the county, this Board and the next Board."
Yeah, I guess, you know, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but not knowing the nature of his claims against the county, I just think six months is crazy.
Okay, so you can think six months is crazy. I get it. I'm trying to give you the nature of the claims.
I understand that, you know, there's a lawyer behind it, but I mean, if we don't know what his specific claims are, and, you know, Commissioner Cosby has talked about, you know, one-ish claim, six months just seems...
So his, his, well, it's, it's that and some sort of form of payment to get the indemnification or the release of claims, but...
There's more money on top of the six months, is that what you're saying?
So, as it stands, it's up to the Board. What can we do?
But you're saying right now, six months, we'll get a uni, six months what?
Well, six months plus, and I'm just close about, right?
Well, an amount to be determined, anything, anything to be determined by the Board.
So, there's six months plus?
Sure.
Oh.
Correct.
A TBD dollar.
TBD, if it's more than zero, TBD.
I will let you know that Jordan has applied for a couple of jobs, I would say two to three, and because of the notoriety here in Ottawa County, he has not been accepted for those jobs from jobs he was qualified for. And I think from a long-term strategy, a 24-year-old, there's risk there for the county if he is not able to gain employment, because there's only two parties that had his application in those job descriptions, and that was Jordan and then the county.
I could also add one other thing about the situation. Part of the problem here is related to Mr. Gibbs. And something that occurred when Jordan was hired. So when he was hired, Mr. Gibbs sent the job description to HR, and it said that a master's degree was preferred. You have all heard repeatedly, because you were in board meetings and watched the news, that Jordan Epperson is not qualified for the role he's in because it required a master's degree. The reason that that is such a prevalent narrative is because allegedly HR released someone, somewhere in a, probably in HR, released the incorrect job description, a set of masters was required, and his resume, his full resume unredacted, which is either against policy or illegal or both, I don't know. And then they didn't just, it didn't just happen once, it was then played over and over and over, and our former HR director doubled down on it over and over, saying a master's was required when it wasn't. If you look at the situation and compare it to other situations, such as Kimball, who had essentially no damages and a separate claim. And these things are, just are what they are, and that's why it's being recommended that we seek a release of claims, yes.
So why Genright wanted to have you Genright?
Because he would like to see his work through and allow a smooth transition.
I don't see the point of delaying that. I mean, if this is the, if this is the will of the Board, then it should be immediate.
Well, what would happen at the next board meeting? We still have one more board meeting on probably the next...
I think the clerk's office can handle that.
Well, that is your opinion.
Okay, I guess that's my opinion, but we manage without, without Mr. Epperson for two or three months after Regina left.
I know we're going to be short-staffed.
Two.
I also know we have to correct, because we're all... I don't think he's being penalized. I mean, essentially, he's, I mean, so, so he loses his last pay period, is that the penalization?
Why would we force him out?
Why would, yeah.
I think we're trying to come to...
If the goal is to close this chapter, then your suggestion seems to be the most expeditious way to close the chapter.
And the new chapter starts in January.
We agree with, we agree with HR's recommendation. You're done. Thank you for your service.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think HR is saying get the guy out of the county.
No, it's actually kind of like the reverse sort of, like we have a problem right. We want to resolve it as calmly and quietly and simply as possible. So, I have spoken to him, I've asked him for feedback on if he would like to be done immediately, if he'd like to stay till the end of the year, if he'd like to stay into next year. I've asked him to stay on into next year. And he said, for the good of the current Board and the future Board, he does not want additional controversy next year. He doesn't want to show up on January 2 and be fired, right? He doesn't want any additional chaos from litigation or anything like that. So I'm here to present the facts and open it up for conversation. That's what I've tried to do, and after... Please, if you could hand out the severance agreement, because there's lots of terms in there, not just numbers. And, you know, thank you for printing that.
Oh, sure.
Oh, sorry, I'll just, I'll sit around. You guys can say whatever you want. I'm just going to be quiet for now and try to facilitate conversation.
I guess I, I'll just restate what I just said. I think two months, two months and immediate dismissal makes sense to me. I don't see the need to have additional time period with Mr. Epperson. I mean, if that's his wish to be dismissed, if he wishes to be dismissed, let's grant him that wish, and, you know, two months severance. Not knowing the nature of the claims, I mean, maybe, maybe if we were to know the nature of the claims, I would have a different opinion. Not knowing the nature of the claims and just maybe just leave the tip of the iceberg, two months makes sense.
And you said two months and immediate dismissal?
Well, he is, you said, you said he is asking to be dismissed. Let's say, great, therefore you're dismissed. You're asking dismissed.
He's asking for, he is asking for a smooth transition to, to continue serving the county until the end of the year so that he doesn't...
At the beginning, you said he's asking to be dismissed.
He's asking to be dismissed.
Cool, we're going to give him, we're going to grant you that.
And for me, I'm not even...
And he builds the, the agenda items for us.
Right, he, he's willing to continue to serve because he wants to serve, he likes serving. He wishes it was different, kind of, and, you know, but it isn't.
So, I'm not even there. I think you're being generous.
So zero.
So, what I'm saying is I'm not even interested in giving him two months. If somebody wants to be dismissed, then they should be allowed to be dismissed, or they should quit. If he has a claim against us, the county, then he should bring it in the court of law and then let justice take place. But this is, this is, I'm not going to be bullied into handing out money. This is, this is...
Zero, okay.
Zero.
I'm just going to try to write stuff down and kind of sum it up. As part of the goal of coming into this is to try to build consensus to do something around that.
Well, this is to be, do you understand what he's threatening litigation, so we're just going to pay? Oh my goodness.
Well, you know that, yeah.
He's a young man, he's a young man.
This is like finding mediation once litigation's already passed, so what, or it happened.
He's not, he's not just threatening litigation. He's had an ongoing investigation into the problem for the past couple of months, and this is the current...
Well, if HR has done something wrong, we should pay for it.
I dare say you do.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think that us saying, like condemning HR is doing something wrong on the forefront like this makes any sense. Let them fight it out in court if he wants to fight for it in court.
So, hold on, hold on, hold on. All I've heard for the last two years is like, you know, stop the controversy, stop the lawsuit, stop all this stuff. Now you're saying just go ahead and just do it and roll with it?
You're not even articulating any claims where he's had financial damages. There's no quantifiable damage here.
Absolutely.
You're saying he applied for a couple of jobs and didn't get them, so he's been damaged?
I'm trying to keep it factual.
And I'm going to go to factual, because I did do the calculation as he told me that he has been denied two or three jobs, and you can get to the specifics as to why. That young man right now makes approximately $81,000 a year. If we were to assume that he just sat in that job and did a 3% increase year over year for 42 years, that's $10 million. So, I mean, there...
That's baloney. You know that no court's going to give him that kind of money. Don't, don't give me that, Gretchen. That's ridiculous.
No, that's the potential risk. It will be way down there.
We're capitulating to somebody trying to strong-arm, one of your friends, strong-arming us for, for some money here, which is ridiculous.
So, to be...
No, I never knew Jordan. I never even really spoke with him until February of this year.
Yeah, and he's done a lousy job. I'm sorry.
He's actually done a good job.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
What have you asked for him to do that he hasn't done?
Gretchen, we don't have enough time.
Really? I think we do actually.
Because you've been responsible, what responsibility...
No, because that's not what we're here to litigate. We're here to talk about this separation agreement.
No, you're backing up because you don't have anything to back it up with.
You're talking about backing stuff up. Talk about all the claims you made against him that, that the sheriff has asked you to back up for.
We're talking currently about...
You know what? Yeah, but she's talking about backing things up. So we're talking about this. I don't think that we should give him a dime, so put me down for zero.
I got you for zero, yes. I'll also write H. Jordan Epperson.
And I came to his office to give it to him, and he did not see me, and he let people disparage me in public.
So, that's totally out of this discussion.
No.
You might be held accountable for that.
Commissioner committed, you better bring that evidence to law enforcement.
I'm already taking care of it outside of this because you didn't...
Law enforcement.
Commissioner Wenzel and Clerk Robug. This is Commissioner Bonham's goal, is to bring up items that you two will then derail.
She brought it up.
He's very good at. Don't let him do it, please, okay? All right? We're not here to discuss that.
He loves to flex the muscle, the pluses of the county, too.
So what we're here to do is talk about a specific...
346 votes, Gretchen.
Specific item, okay?
346 votes.
Let's keep it moving, guys.
I have no idea what you're referring to.
Clearly, clearly.
We're here to talk about...
346 votes?
That's what you received.
A specific item goes down that person's figure.
Oh my gosh.
We are here to speak about a specific item...
Focus on your chair.
Justice will come.
Focus on your, yeah, okay. Justice's already come for you.
Yes, Commissioner Bergman?
Yes. This guy here has his hand up and had it up for a long time.
Let's go.
Just clarified, section 4B is $150,000. That was the plus, right?
That was what?
The $150,000 is the plus, right?
Correct. Correct. I mean, at the discretion of the Board, with whatever the Board wants to do. If the Board wants to do what Mr. Bonham says, it'd be zero. And then we just...
Oh no, so six months plus one?
See if he will sign whatever happens.
Yeah, it's a plus.
Right.
Rebecca.
Some, that's...
He's how old again? 24?
No idea. He's probably older than that now, maybe 25 now.
No, he's 24.
I see no absolute, absolutely no reason to...
I would agree.
Okay, so I'm hearing not 150. Am I, am I hearing, like, that's too much?
That's way, I, I think that should be zero.
Okay, zero.
If we give him a severance
Yeah.
of a certain amount of salary. That's it.
I would agree with Commissioner.
Either three months or six months.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask you guys what your reasoning is for that? In, in light of, in light of the information that's before us? Like, I would like to hear the reasonings. If you're willing to share, Commissioner Bergman or Commissioner Curran, what would be, why less, why not that amount? Thinking into, taking into account some of the things that we've been under regarding due to Gibbs issues that we had, that we saw how that all played out with Kimball. I guess that's just, what is...
So you're talking $13,333. So if he makes 80 grand, right, times six months.
80 divided by 12.
Oh my gosh.
And then times six.
Okay, that makes more sense. Or divided.
No, you're going to do the week.
So it's 40,000, roughly.
Sure.
Yeah, that, I could have done that in my head when I think about that. I don't know that I needed a calculator for that one. So, 40,000, it's six months severance. Is he planning on staying on this side of the state, or is he planning on going back to the east side?
He's looking for a job.
That's not him.
I'm just curious, because I know that if he kind of went over, if he maybe got out of this area, he might have more luck.
I believe he's looking anywhere he can find one. That's my understanding, but I don't know that for sure.
Pardon me?
I don't think he's, I think he can find a job.
Say it again, sorry?
I think he can find a job.
I think he will, yes.
I think we should have a conversation with Mr. Bergman.
He might have, he might have a hard time at some positions.
Yeah.
I guess, I would, I would ask that you have a conversation with him, honestly. Yeah, because I don't think it's, this isn't directed at you at all when I say this, but I don't think it's moral or ethical what has happened to him. I mean, his professional and personal reputation have literally been put, I mean, I would say destroyed at this point, and you can ask him about the feedback that he's receiving. He's only 24 years old, and although somebody thinks here that he didn't do a good job, I'm going to tell you that I have found for my finance committee meetings, he has done a very good job, very responsive. Many Friday nights where we're doing additions to the agenda to make sure that it's accurate for the Tuesday presentation. He's available to me in the evenings, he's been available to me during the day, date, anytime, basically even on weekends. And it changed after John Gibbs left. And part of what Jordan's issue also is, is a hostile work environment. And I was aware of a hostile work environment as of February. It's a legitimate hostile work environment that he was subjected to, and I think the county is also subjected to that as well, because we allowed for it to happen.
I have heard that he is the most despised employee in the entire building, and that comes...
How can you say things like that?
Sheriff Kempker has said that. He walks around like he owns the building, and so...
Then bring Sheriff Kempker in here.
Yeah, let's bring these folks in. Yeah, this would be the easiest termination in the world for him.
He also said you're a used car salesman, so whatever.
He says a lot of things, yeah.
He does.
This is ridiculous.
He says lots of stuff, that's, it's fine.
Speaking about Jordan, I, I would share for the Chair of Talent Recruitment, the work that I've asked him to do, he does. And it's not just during year nine to five. It's like if I need help later on, he'll take a call. And I have appreciated that. I am concerned for him going forward, finding the job. I think he will eventually land on his feet. I do think that there is some comparison to be had with the Kimball situation, and he landed a job right away. His, his name wasn't brought through the mud, as was Jordan's, due to the negligence from my perspective from our HR department. And I don't think that was right for Jordan, and I do think we as a Board need to take that into consideration as well as looking at the litigation that possibly could be involved if we don't at least consider what's before us.
I'd like to add a little bit more of the undergirding to what's going on. Jordan did the right thing in asking for an investigation. Right, it's outside counsel looking at the issues, as is their normal confidential process. It's a little different because it puts the county in a difficult, a more difficult position. But he did the right thing in asking, and as Nate Wolf has spent hours and hours and hours working through the issues, and yes, like some of them are probably moot because people have left the county. They are still real issues because they occurred. So we're not going to be, you know, updating someone's file for releasing the wrong job description if they don't want to work here. It just, it also means there's still exposure, and that it is in the best interest of the county, no matter what else happens, to gain a release. So I think this is not coming from me. This is between Nate Wolf and Jordan, and it came to a head like a week or, week and a half ago or something, where it became obvious that he needs to exit. And that would be in the best interest of the county, and I said, okay, well, I will bring it to a closed session.
We, we should be able to talk to the attorney on this.
Sure, I'm telling you exactly what he's told me, and that's...
But if we have questions, we should be able to ask the attorney. We should be able to do that.
It's a confidential investigation related to HR harassment, so it's not handled that right.
That's the way HR investigations are handled, they're confidential.
That's why we're here.
That's why we're here, to have a discussion on how to best...
I understand that.
Pursue a release.
I suggest we go around and, and each, each of us.
Can I?
Yeah, keep going, and then we'll turn... Yeah, keep going, and then we'll try to get to that.
I, I just want to follow up on something that Ellis said, where she said our, our HR was negligent. I actually would reframe that. Our HR was not negligent. Our HR was intentional in a lead and caused malicious and caused intentional damage. And we've had a situation where employees of this county, specifically and especially in areas of the media, with the intent of destroying, destroying Republicans. And what has happened to Jordan is political collateral damage. And that's something that happens, you know, to, to elected officials. We kind of all know that going in, that that's a possibility. It's still horrific and disgusting when it happens, but, but we're elected. But our employees should not have to suffer political collateral damage and to be personally dragged through the media and defamed. And have it happen in an intentional manner from our HR department. Our county is responsible for what happened to Jordan.
That is our problem, actually. That is the, one of the core issues at hand.
I, I concur with, I would change my word choice with that as well. I'm very much in agreement with it. It shouldn't matter what side you're on, what happened was wrong.
I, for B, I would consider very high fifty or sixty thousand. I would not do over fifty. Because when, because it's forty, plus fifty or sixty, it'd be like a hundred.
So the damages that are, I don't want to use that word. The number that is in there, the one fifty, is from what Mr. Wolf approximated. That's, that's it. That's the reason. That's why it's there.
I would argue that if we ended up in a settlement conference, he would be getting so much more than he would like.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I was in Minnesota.
I think there's ample evidence to terminate with cause, and he should get zero.
With cause? Why? I don't even, I don't understand that.
Free to go there. My, my perspective would be that we should have been in this room prior to that versus you just making that as a blank statement.
No, because you're gonna protect him between now and then. There's no, there's not a political will to make a change, but that changes in January. You will find out.
Right.
The threats.
Okay, let's just highlight that for a second. So you're making it very clear, as you have in the past, that there's a big change coming in January, right?
You will not be holding that gavel and waving it around and threatening Zalstra with it anymore.
Right, right.
Oh, Zalstra, you protect her, Zalstra, now that's bad.
Oh, stop it.
So there's a big change, okay? So let's recognize our reality for a moment. Say, yeah, there will be a big change. Will Mr. Epperson be around? Or will he be let go and free to sue?
That is up to the next administrator to decide.
No, it's not.
How is it not?
You're excited about the opportunity.
Well, you just went and said that Sheriff Kempker thinks he's despicable. You want to bring Sheriff Kempker in as the interim. So what you're saying is that you would let him go.
Whether Sheriff Kempker is the next one, he'll decide who is, who is right man is.
Play checkers.
So there's an, there's some obvious, you know, this is why I wrote at the end of my note here. I recommend the board approve a severance and release of claims agreement with Mr. Epperson to resolve and eliminate any claims Mr. Epperson may have against the county and provide a smooth transition for next year. Without additional litigation, controversy, et cetera. It's in the best interest of the county.
It's gonna be long, it's gonna be expensive. There's ample people that are willing to come forward, speak against his claims, to defend, and to file counterclaims. And, and he could enjoy a big legal bill in that process.
And now you're threatening him directly, Mr. Bonham.
I know, we're all great witnesses.
No, this is the facts of the situation.
Fact? Where's your facts?
No, because this is another option.
This is just threats from you, right?
You guys want to hand a bunch of money because he's your friend. Okay, that's what you're doing.
That's not true.
That's true.
That's not true.
I'm the only one that's willing to say it, but that's exactly what's going on here. You want to, you want to hand these guys golden parachutes to move them on, because that's all that you can do right now. And it's ridiculous.
What happened with John Shay's, John Shay's contract in November?
Yeah, I was against that, and I'm against this. You know what? And you're against him getting fired on January two, but you weren't, you're for all these other people getting fired, January three last time?
I wasn't, I wasn't until John Shay put his job.
Thank you for saying that.
I wasn't, I was going to keep John Shay.
The things that you guys do, you're repeating everything that you, you know, was done before. You're spending all the money, everything you can, everything you complained about these guys before. You're doing.
I'm not complaining about them. Not at all.
Here's another option.
Yes.
Can I throw out another option?
Please, please throw out another option, please.
All right.
Add to the discussion.
Gretchen is concerned about his not being able to get a job. How about if we gave him six months severance?
Yeah.
With a one-year severance if he doesn't get a job?
Within the six months?
Yes.
I like that.
That would also be very fair.
Nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman.
And how?
It'd be total potential of eighty thousand if he doesn't get a job.
We wouldn't have anywhere near that to fight this in court.
Can I play off of that?
Sheriff Howard's not lying either.
I liked the idea. Would it, would it have some contingents on that of like what type of a job? And like, what are the parameters?
No. I, I do have a thought. My understanding is that he would like a clean break, that he doesn't want to have to be.
Then he should resign, walk away.
Tied to checking back in, continued communication, things like that. And I don't blame him by listening to Mr. Bonham. No one can blame him.
That's the fear. We wouldn't even be here, I don't think.
So I like the concept. It's, it's less risk, or it's less, you know, money for the county, it's less potential cost. But I, I would think we need to find something that, as Mr. Wolf has said, is create a clean break. I, I like the idea, but I think it should be something that's immediate.
Well, that's why if we did potentially forty thousand, and then on B, did fifty or sixty, that would save the county fifty thousand, but give him enough to get through the year. It took him that long.
Sorry, sorry, say it again, I was thinking about something, sorry.
You're fine. That's why if we did six months sever, or six months severance, and then did fifty or sixty, that would get him through at least a year so he could find a job. And his, I mean, anybody, I agree with you, Gretchen. That boy goes to get a job unless it's in politics.
He's struggling even in politics because Ottawa County is so hot.
Yeah. I, I mean, all they do have to do is put a Google search on it.
That's your fault. You guys did that.
It's yours. It is yours, Sarah Lee, speed dial.
Give me a break. The people spoke, remember? The people, the people that you fight for, they spoke. And they said, three hundred and forty-six in your development, in your entire, that's who said they speak for you.
Ryan Birch, can I talk about Ryan Birch? Because I lost a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar job, and I'm coming, I'm coming.
A hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar job.
We're here not to talk about votes.
No, she's talking about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar job.
For me, personally.
She's talking about her job.
Oh, it was my job, it was my job.
We're not here to talk about votes. We're here to talk about the issue in front of us, which is what we're only legally allowed to talk about in closed session.
Ooh.
So, not very long. Don't put that in the notes. So, let's go back to what Rebecca was saying. If we, she's looking to lower the cost. I don't disagree.
Lower the cost, but.
I don't think we need to go to like the high, the upper limit. I think he wants to exit. So.
I mean.
And?
What number were you talking about?
I, twelve, our hundred, total.
Six months severance and fifty or sixty grand on the claims.
At least the claims at that point.
Yeah.
Do you have?
Ninety.
Someone was saying something.
Confirm the payout to Kimball.
Oh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Two hundred and twenty-five, one seventy-five one to Kimball.
I'm just gonna make a comment that seeing this for the first time and trusting our HR representation, Legal drafted this language with more knowledge than I have. I don't know how I could change his thought process.
The, the language, yes. The numbers, absolutely. If the county's to move forward, the board is to move forward with something, the numbers are at the complete discretion of the board.
However, with that statement, you had mentioned that Nate Wolf felt like the one hundred fifty thousand, correct me if I'm wrong, was the amount that he recommended due to the knowledge that he has?
Nate Wolf did not recommend a dollar amount. He said, as is normal in these situations, the exposure is possibly a year in damages and attorney's fees, plus the attorney's fees for the county itself.
And that's where that amount started from?
Yes. So, when we've been in other settlement conferences, and when you go into these things, you look at the facts that are in front of you and you say, what is the max exposure? And then what is the risk associated with it? And then what is the, the really bad, like downstream, right? Like if Mr. Kimball had gone to trial, then you have to have Mr. Gibbs come in and be a witness. And then all hell breaks loose. And then he doesn't get two hundred and twenty-five thousand to go away, he gets two hundred and twenty.
All of these people you hired.
Right. So, I'm just trying to explain for the rationale at the table, how this works. I think a lot of you already know how it works.
And, you know, it doesn't matter, at the end of the day, we can't go back and undo anything. All we can do, and, and don't get me wrong, I disagree in many regards to some of the decisions that were made and the, where we're at now. But we can't, but we can't go and undo it. So we just have to go with where we're at. And I just asked Jack and Lainey, just to, I said, hey, even though these people aren't here, even though John Gibbs isn't here, even though potentially the person who leaked Jordan's stuff to the media isn't here, can he still sue us? Because they're gone, it's, it's done. And he, they both informed me that yes, in fact, they can sue. And let's face it, we're a lawsuit magnet. Mr. Bonham, you're the one who said that law, or litigation breeds litigation. And you were correct. And that's, but that's where we're at.
Incompetence breeds incompetence, and that's what we've seen a lot of, too.
Litigation breeds litigation. And you, you mentioned that, and I, I certainly have seen that. I, I had, my stance has never changed. And no matter what the situation was, or who was on what side.
Was I gone long enough?
It's never changed. Still talking about that now. We're gonna, I think mitigating and going to mediation or, and trying to mitigate these things before they happen is always in the best interest of the county. First of all, it cuts down on the drama. It cuts down the excessive dollar amounts. I do think that, while I, this is not my favorite thing, I think that if he has legitimate claims, which I'm pretty sure he does. We all know there's gonna be attorneys lining up to take this case, because guess what? It's already been proved.
Right, that's the problem.
It's already been proved that they can just take the case on and, and get money.
And, and the, some of the facts that would have to go to court have already been proved, if you will.
How? Just because this Nate Wolf says so?
Because of what occurred.
So I, I do think that.
What is documented.
Yeah, and I do think that we should, should look at an agreement. I think we need to figure out what the dollar amounts are. That's just me.
I have, I have a question for Mr. Bonham. Is it, it, it sure would be nice if there was a way for this board to come together and close this chapter together and hand it on to the next board.
I'll give you one number.
Sure.
One number.
Okay.
What Doug offered, period.
What did, what did Doug offer?
Two months.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, so.
That's twenty thousand. I did that math in my head, in case you're wondering.
And that's everything. That's, that's not six months severance plus twenty thousand. That's two months, we're done.
If, if the board came to consensus and it wasn't two months, would you be willing to consider voting for it, even if it wasn't your two months? So that we could close this out?
No, I'm giving you, I'm giving you my one number.
I've just told many people I would try to do that and try to bring a calmer consensus so that, you know, there's less chaos and, you know, screaming at each other in meetings. I'm gonna keep trying to do that, but.
The only person that screamed today was you at Doug with your gavel. That's the only person that said something.
No one screamed at anyone.
That's not even true.
You interrupted her and said you're gonna gavel him.
He was interrupting. I was just asking him to stop.
Yeah, and you, you're a threat.
The maturity of this room is something else.
I apologize for getting part of it.
So let's go to Commissioner Zalstra, because I think he might have, oh, hold on.
Just me?
Let's go to Commissioner Zalstra. Do you have any, anything additional?
I, you know, I'm just gonna repeat what I said. I think it's fair, two months.
Commissioner Klein?
No.
Sorry. My bad, my bad.
No, I, we don't know the nature of the claims.
Commissioner Klein, is, do you have any additional input or?
Um, but.
No, you go.
Oh, I guess, like, so, I guess my question is if we negotiate, if we like fiddle with this recommendation, and they go back and, and they say, no, thank you. Do we come back? Is this essentially like mediation and negotiation by a protracted measure? Or is this, is it an all or nothing right here? This is where we decided?
My, my thought on that, this is just my thought, because this is up to the board, is there's not very much latitude in this room for anything. So I don't see a lot of negotiation going on. He has informed Mr. Wolf he would like to exit cleanly, without lawsuits, without anything else, without pursuing claims. So Mr. Wolf has given us the option of this release agreement, with the understanding that if we can make a viable, a reasonable offer, I believe he will sign it. And if we, if we can come to a consensus in the room, can't make any decisions, technically, we could invite him in. Now, I don't want to, I don't want to have him in here at all.
Does he, does Jordan know what's proposed in there?
He knows in general that it's a severance agreement and that it's created by.
But does he know the dollar amounts?
Just in general.
What is that, what does?
Meaning, meaning I've had a discussion with him to explain that there is no guarantee of anything. And that, I have been hands off because of the nature of the investigation.
I'm sorry. So this is, so this is essentially like, this is the lawyer, I mean, HR's lawyer, Legal, saying, for our coverage, this is your, this is your max amount. So if I, for example, was to say, cut the whole thing in half, give him three months severance and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that would, there, there's no outside knowledge past Legal to say, yeah, you know, I'm seeing.
That's my concern. Does he know this? And then we go back, does he know the dollar amounts? And then we go back, and he's gonna be like.
You know what I mean? Could he say?
He could do that anyways.
He could say no.
But if he knew the dollar amounts with what was going on from those, it's a different kettle of fish.
I'm, I'm just gonna ask him.
Just give him the security to get another job. And there has been injury. There really truly has. The hostile work environment was significant.
That was one of the main things in his discussions with Mr. Wolf. No.
Yeah.
And I have heard some theories.
Hostile work environment.
So have I.
Then I would default back, then I would default back to your initial position, is a year seems six months and a forty thousand. I mean, it can be phrased in the terms of six months and a forty thousand stipend to help you get to.
Half and half. I like, I like three and seventy-five, too.
I'm not gonna, I, again, a lot of this occurred prior to my arrival, so I'll take it in fact that if Legal found that there was damage, the anecdotal whatever around the table doesn't really matter. If Legal says there is, then there is. He will, he deserves justifiable compensation, but this is a, a large amount.
The, the quote is the exposure on, read it. Sorry. The exposure on severance to get a release of claims is less than the exposure on the lawsuit and everything else. If we can get a release of claims and just say it's done, then there's not this amplification factor of, well. well, you know, at one time, you know, Mr. Gibbs may just get up at 2:00 AM and get his laundry or whatever. And then it starts to escalate.
And I, I don't know about you guys, but you all did read the job description for this, right?
I think we should read it again and see how many of those items he actually does qualify for.
But no, I'm talking about like, the, I remember like-
Or how many he doesn't qualify for.
To be his body man. I mean, I remember reading that thing. It was like three pages long.
Yeah, voted against it.
Hand the guy.
He had to take the disc and the Colby, had to submit a writing sample for 81,000 dollars.
It was clear to me that this was, yeah.
Then why'd you guys vote for that?
So, let's do that. So-
We're not responsible for a job description.
We're kinda getting off the, you know, let's, let's cut to the chase. Keep going around and let's ask people where they are.
I think it needs to be around a hundred.
Let's move on. Come on, come on.
So, if we can, if we can get it to, closer to 100, then it seems like we can mix the numbers somewhere.
100,000.
I'll go next.
Okay.
Okay. Because, because I have seen the damages, I would say six months plus 80 to 100.
What are the damages that you saw?
Because I know what would happen if this went forward. This guy would walk out with about a couple million. If we ended up in a settlement conference, he's gonna, he's gonna-
Go ask for the world.
He's beginning, gonna be getting a whole lot more than Kimball.
That's how we got Gibbs out, too, was the hostile work environment.
Yep. Okay.
So-
Threats.
So Sylvia's saying six months and 80 to 100. Okay. Anybody else wanna add numbers? Roger, Kendra, Gretchen, did you say anything?
I'm gonna agree with Sylvia, too, because I think that if it goes to court, it's worth way more in the red than now.
Yeah, but I think he wants purpose to bet.
About six months and 75.
I think it's six months plus a year of salary. So, what's, what's a year of salary?
Like 80 or 90?
81 and a change, right?
I thought it was on the job description.
And then we're meeting Nate Wolf's, you know, he's-
I-
If, if, if-
I'd be willing to go a little lower than that because we're doing it immediately.
Yeah. I, I think it needs to be around 100,000 personally.
If you, if you look at what Commissioner Bergman said, you balance it out to like, okay, well, if we could do it in a longer term, like maybe we don't have to. If we're gonna do it, I wanted to do it and get it done. And if we're offering that to just clear everything, he's willing to sign it, you know, six months and 75 is more reasonable.
Joe, could I just add, you know, since you just talked about clean break, has changed the separation date?
Why do you wanna change the separation date so bad?
I just don't see the value of signing this agreement, agreeing to this agreement, and then not also fulfilling his own wish.
I tend to agree on that. I, I think, you know, if, it's going to be a, a work environment that's gonna be very difficult for him after everything like this, for, for everybody. So, I, I do see the wisdom in, in that and having that, you know, as much as I know there's a need during the preparations for the next meetings and such, but, yeah.
He has limited work that's true, you know, that's definitely like strongly needed in the next month.
Right, right.
Two weeks.
Three weeks.
There's probably some stuff with talent recruitment, there's some stuff with the last board meeting. You know, what, what have we allowed either, what have we allowed him to choose that date and ask him?
I think, you know, with the normalization of our, of our capability, it's the next person of, you know, I think if you make the clean break, give him that wish, and I'm willing to, you know, go to what the group is deciding on the dollar amount. But I do think that there is value to the thought process. So, if we want a clean break, let's do it now.
Yeah. Well, the other thing you could do is you could do something like, you know, you could do whenever, whenever Jordan's ready to go, between now and, between now and the 31st, like-
I mean, he can turn, he could work, figure it out today when he needs to. And he could figure that out. So, I mean, if we just ask him, he can tell us the date and just put it in.
I guess I would personally cut this, the entire package in half, both A and B. And that makes it roughly 100, short, shy of 100. We offer three months for a severance for, it just seems to kinda fit in with what our practices are. As far as the separation date, the only, I agree with Doug unless the optics of it are bad for the county, in which case having him stick around until the end of the calendar year would be my recommendation. It's, that's, I, I mean, I, I agree 100% that if, that if the gentleman wants to be done, then he should be done. And that, and that the moment his ink is on here, it should be over with. However, we do have an obligation to make sure that, you know, our, that every, that the optics on everything look as good as possible for us. So, that would be the only, unless there's, unless there's like-
It's cause, right? You know, with cause or without cause. If we discharge him today, it feels like it's with cause.
It could be part of it.
And there's a, there's a trick in the industry called, but he's leaving. But I'm just saying eligible for rehire is one of the tricks in the HR industry where you call and ask, is this person eligible for rehire? And I think that that's something that does need to be covered. If we say yes, then he can get hired someplace else. If we say no, that's the industry kinda patent, we can't tell you his, his performance. But what we can tell you is he's not eligible for rehire.
I'm strongly willing to just ask him which date, the latest of January 1, he would be, he would prefer.
I would, I would love to see him just leave.
Can I ask, may I ask why?
To see him just, it's clear cut. I mean, that's, that's the way people always do it.
When people negotiate to leave, they leave. They don't-
They don't stick around.
They don't stick around.
I've given two weeks, but we're within a month.
Yeah, there's usually a transition, often a transition between employees leaving somewhat amicably, if you will. I do think the optics are part of this discussion.
Well, what about if he left immediately, but we kept him as a rehireable employee? That kinda splits the difference to some degree.
No, it won't, because then the agreement says something like, the only thing HR is gonna say
You can't do that.
is the dates of his agreement.
What can't you do? You can do that, actually.
I'm just gonna say I'm concerned about potential chaos starting at this point till the end of the year.
Well, this is, this is closed session. We're gonna go out and if there's consensus, vote on whatever the consensus looks like.
Well, and the-
It's not overly public until there's a FOIA, until someone starts talking.
Yeah, well, that's the issue.
But I do think that if we go out there and like he's done today.
Yeah, I don't like the optics of that.
I think there needs to be a discussion with Jordan.
That looks like he did something wrong. And he did not do something wrong. The county did a lot wrong.
He would like to continue through the end of the year.
He's asking for separation, though, correct? He's asking for separation?
As of the first, yeah.
So, if it's a, if it's a mutual, I understand. But if it's a mutual agreement where both parties said, we agree to separate, I don't see how that negatively affects him going forward. It's a mutually agreed separation.
So, ideally it is.
Why make this a hangup point, though, as far as like when he leaves? If we can agree on the dollar amounts?
Go ahead, Joe. Let's try to go back to the dollar amount. We've heard three months and, so we've heard half. We've heard three months and 75. We've heard six months and 75. We've heard six months and 80 to 100.
I think I like the three months and 75 first, I think.
I'm not opposed to three months and 75. I'm not opposed to six months and 75 either. At, at some level, I don't know if it matters.
I think we need to be fair. We need to be fair, though.
Because there is injury. And that's not being, yeah.
Then if there is injury-
Doing the salary is a salary. There's the injury that's also-
If there was no injury, three months would be fair. It does seem more fair for six months.
I don't see a definable cost that he's borne, a financial damage. It has to be proven in court to say, I was damaged in this way.
It doesn't have to be proven in court.
Well, that, that's what the, the court's gonna ask for, is show me your damages.
I think we need to finish it today. It needs to be done, done.
So-
We don't want court, we don't want litigation, we don't want, we want it to be done.
And I think that's Jordan's reason for doing this.
And really, I think, Joe, you need to ask him about, you know, if he's willing to leave ASAP.
So, what is the viability of me asking him that question, like leaving the closed session and asking him about the date and the whatever month and 75? Or maybe I should just ask him only the date.
He should need to know the amount.
Joe, that, that has to come through, I mean, that, that doesn't come through us, though. That comes through LEO, right? I mean, they say the board has offered this.
No, we just, we, if this moves forward under consensus right now, we just go vote as discussed, we approve the agreement as discussed in closed session.
So-
So, what agreement are we gonna?
It's currently, as is, asking him about which date and six months and 75 dollars.
Joe, just a quick, he gave you the date?
He provided the date. I asked him if he would like to be done earlier or later. And he said no.
And that date that he provided is what Nate used in the development of this.
And so, again, for clarity, you're saying the damages are that HR released the wrong job description that showed him to be not qualified to do that job?
That is not what I'm saying. That is part of what I'm saying.
Please clarify. Okay, what is the rest of it that I'm missing?
Would you like me to read what I took as personal?
I'm just trying to, I'm just asking myself if anything I say will satisfy Mr. Bonnema. And I don't think the answer is yes, so I'm just not gonna answer it.
There is a job description that he applied for on April 2023, April 4. A second job description with a different role requirement, one that he didn't apply to, was given to Sarah Leach of the Holland Sentinel, along with Jordan Epperson's resume that included his personal identifying information. The released confidential information who had access to it at that point and was the release initiated by somebody within Ottawa County Human Resources Department. There's only two parties that had access to it.
So, again, because his public information, his, you know, personal phone number or his email-
I had all that, no.
Here's why I still believe in your question. That's not the only thing.
It's not.
You're saying there's damages associated with that, though?
Yes.
Oh, sure.
So, I'm trying to understand the whole picture of what his damages are.
Yes.
Watch Youtubes of how many times public comments have come up and they've been directed at Jordan. And he sits there with his back to them, you know, he's not even confronting his accuser, and it's based upon the statement of the five mandatory criteria-
Horrible things about women on social media. Horrible things.
People sue based, people sue based on defamation, humiliation, retaliation, hostile work environment.
He said horrible things about women and they spoke to that. So, at-
Your friend Brian Bird said horrible things about women that were lies, too.
I don't know what you're referring to, but we're talking about him right now.
We're talking about things that occurred during his tenure working in the county. We're talking about, we're not going back to when-
Two years ago?
He started in August of 2023.
So-
Fair hand raise.
Yes.
I think this is very gracious of him to do, because in all honesty, he could be set for life, potentially.
He could lose track.
And, right, potentially. And the county ends up looking bad in the public eye.
Right.
And I think that for him, this is miniscule.
I think so.
In comparison.
It is. That Gibbs filed it.
Mr. Chair, I need to cancel a dental appointment right now.
Okay, sounds good. Roger, wait, wait, uh, just something, Roger, Chris?
Can we split between this between three and six months, then? I mean, say, not 4.5, but, I mean, four months, 75. I mean, if this, if, if we're trying to get to a certain spot between those two, throw another, throw another one in. He's, he's, he's still being given a, and he's still giving, being given fundage that will support his job hunting efforts for quite some time. And that's the goal of this, is to make sure that his, that the damages that were inflicted upon him here, he's supported by us while he goes and finds his next thing. I think that is a, we're way over 100,000 dollars now. That is, that should be able to keep him until he finds something, a position that is suitable for his education and talents.
Four months plus what?
Four months plus 75.
You would, you would think that is the true standard?
I would, I, I would be fairly amiable to that.
I'm also not opposed to that.
Yeah.
He makes 80, though, right? He makes 80.
Maybe it's 90. It's probably 95 would benefit, 90 would benefit.
So, we're giving him, we're giving him a year severance? And he's been here just since-
Not just severance.
You're ignoring all of the other things we talked about in the last 25 minutes.
But you're saying that he's gonna get millions of dollars, like you're offering 80, 4.5 million dollars? I mean, it's, it's like, come on, these numbers aren't real.
Is that even a question, or?
Probably.
Yeah.
This isn't-
You're the one who said it. It's on your phone, you showed it to him.
Mr. Chair, I do have just a quick question.
Yeah.
First of all, my apologies for engaging in chat-like behavior earlier and hearing a discussion between me and Mr. Wenzel. That was inappropriate. But this question's actually pertaining to the minute. So, I just wanna clarify, because I wrote down earlier that Jordan provided us with this document based on, on something I may or may not have heard correctly.
The date.
Provided the date. So, this document is not-
Nate Wolf created the document.
Yeah.
He provided the draft of the release of claims.
Gotcha.
Separation and release agreement is the title.
So, then earlier, there was a question asked as it, is, okay. I'm just trying to clarify the notes that I had, which we can go back to the recording. But Mr. Epperson is not in, does not have knowledge of this dollar amount.
He has some knowledge of what is in here, and he knows that we're discussing a possible release.
Does he know that this says 150,000 dollars?
He knows it's 150 or less.
He knows the 150, though, because you've told him.
Did I talk to him correctly?
Okay, so you put us in that position to set his expectations that he could get up to 150,000?
He can get up to a heck of a lot more.
But you've already set his expectation of this.
I have asked what his expectations are in general, yes.
And what did he say?
And he's saying, he's echoing what Nate Wolf has said.
Exactly.
Nate Wolf, according to this 4A, he would know that from what Nate has said.
No, because Jordan is-
Well, 4A and B.
Because Nate didn't give this to Jordan. Nate gave this to me.
And then you told him.
So, Jordan hasn't seen this at all.
So, I've talked to Jordan in general, because I'm not gonna come into this, I did not wanna come into this meeting. I am the contact person for the investigation.
You started a negotiation, is what you did.
Joe?
Yeah, you've said-
Yes.
I'm, I'm gonna make, we, we can't make, we can't vote. We can go around and we can give our thoughts in one succinct statement, statement of one sentence. I'm going with four months and 75. And I think that's what this guy said.
That's what I say.
And, and what about Allison? Let's go around, come on.
I'll say it too, if I am, I want it done, and I-
Go next. I think you should say your end, though.
I, the current is that we're asking him what to date. Allison?
I'm at the, keeping the six months as suggested in the agreement. And my max for B would be the 100,000.
Okay, Roger.
Six months, 75,000.
Sylvia?
I'm at six and 100, like Allison.
I'm fine with four and 75.
Four, 75.
Six and 75.
Six and 100.
I'm back to zero.
Doug?
Two months and immediate separation.
All right, so we are not too far off from a consensus on this. Can we, if we're trying to meet- If we're trying to meet in the middle, it's looking like six and seventy-five. Can we go five, seventy-five?
Five and a hundred.
I, I like the optics of it being under a hundred. If we can get him to agree to that, I like the optics. And I care about the optics in this.
If it's three and a hundred, or if a hundred is, if a hundred is where we're sitting on, on part D, then two, then one month and a hundred. This, I mean, it needs-
No, let's, I'm fine with three and seven, three and a hundred. Let's do the five and seventy-five. Come on.
Right, right. Five and seventy-five, sorry, yes. Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
Well, are you there looking at it?
I'm good with five and seventy-five.
I'm okay with that.
Gretchen?
How much was, about one month worth?
That's one twenty-five total.
Six thousand, six hundred roughly.
How much?
It's eighty thousand a year, six thousand, six hundred something, I think.
I personally like this six because to me, six means valued employee. That's why I'm reaching this.
Okay, all right.
Six thousand, six hundred, sixty-six thousand, sixty-six thousand.
How much?
Six thousand, six hundred, sixty-six dollars and sixty-six thousand.
Six thousand is all what the difference is between one month?
Well, it depends on what his actual salary is.
So, so we're-
Yes, it does depend on what his actual salary is.
So Sylvia's brought up-
Is it benefited, unbenefited, what total would work?
Sylvia's brought up the fact that six months indicates valued employee. I think honestly, five months indicates valued employee. It's more than three. I'm not, I'm not so hung up on thirty days that, I think, with the honest on him, he's going to have to work harder. You know, I mean, it's lower than-
Joe, you're employed.
I am employed.
So, I mean, there is a different person out there.
Well, it's not like he's not-
He's out there searching for jobs, right? It's difficult.
Definitely six helps. Do you have a sale due in six months?
Then it would be, then it should be six and sixty. That's, I mean, as, as this keeps, as the, as the months keep ramping up, the part D needs to go down. It needs to be reflective of that. It's-
That's going down from a hundred.
I, I'm very good with a hundred. And however you guys want to slice that, I just look at the total number. Doesn't matter to me what number is what. It doesn't matter. I look at the total cost is what I'm looking at.
How are you doing there, Joe?
Pretty good. How about you? What we got?
Now we've, now we're to, what, six and seventy-five?
Six and seventy-five.
I, I just wanna-
Five and seventy-five and we come to a larger consensus and it's done.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When he finds a job?
That's the risk.
Right.
Right.
Well, if he finds a job, let's say a month out.
We hope he dies.
Really good.
This is just severance and release though. He doesn't have to mitigate on this great severance and release.
He just do as if he got a job.
So, it's like Kimball got a better job. So we're at five and seventy-five or six and seventy-five. Sounds like we can do five and seventy-five.
I think we, I think we'll need to find out like, how much does he actually make? Because I think we're basing it off of what we think versus what we know.
I had ninety, yeah, maybe it's ninety with that.
So it is? So the question is-
But it sounds like it's really stuck on ninety. Is it benefited or not benefited?
It's actual benefit.
But we're bringing six, we're bringing six months. Yeah, but it determines what the total dollar amount is. That's why I would want to know what we're actually, like, is it ninety thousand, not eighty thousand, minus my six months? Or, you know what I mean, divide by twelve thousand.
Is it benefited or not?
I, we need to hear from HR on this. We really do. We need to hear their side. This is, yeah, we really do because this is a lot of money here. And to not listen to their side of it, I think is omitting a huge part of this conversation.
They're part of the case.
Yeah, exactly. We need to hear their side. We're hearing from Jordan. We're hearing Jordan's side, his claims. I'd like to hear the other side.
I'd like to be done and do, and do five and seventy-five.
Hang on one second. The attorney heard your side, that's why I did this recommendation.
It's the attorney's investigation, the attorney's recommendation.
That's why I felt the attorney should be doing this.
So if we can do five and seventy-five, if everyone will agree to that in concept, as in bringing this to consensus. And maybe it's not what everybody likes the best, but you know what, it's something, we're done.
Do you want to go around the table again?
No, unless, does anybody, can we get people to go to five and seventy-five? Roger, Roger, Allison.
Yes.
Chris. Kendra, Sylvia, Allison. So.
So how much is Webmark going to cost us now?
So we're down to-
His claims.
We're down to five. We're down to five and seventy-five. I'm going to consensus in closed session.
Now, do we need to go out of closed session, go back in again? And not go out first?
Can we hear you?
We can't even go back out.
What?
Yeah.
You have to vote to go back in.
So what, what is the motion, Joe, before we go back out?
I'll make a motion to come out of closed session.
Well, hang on just a second.
So the, the, the motion is to, all right, I don't know. I'll, I'll ask LEO for help with exact wording, to approve and authorize the board chair and clerk/register to sign the separation and release agreement with Jordan Epperson as discussed in closed session.
Yep. And how are you phrasing the time, the separation date?
I will ask him if it, if he would like-
Like right now?
If Katori signs it, I'll ask him if he would like it any earlier than January one, and if he does, then we'll change it.
So it will be as late as January one or-
No later than January.
Can he change it?
Yeah, he can tell us, no, he can tell us before he signs it.
How come are we giving him unemployment benefits, number six?
Well, we're probably not.
Well, it says that we won't contest it.
Right, that's just standard language in the agreement. We have these separate-
Rachel, we need to leave these with you, right?
Nope, I don't need that.
Do you guys have a vote?
Need to leave these with you?
Yes, you can leave them with, so I'm just going to restate the motion just real quick and then we'll go to Commissioner Bergman's actual motion. So your motion will be to approve and authorize the separation and release.
To approve and authorize the board chair and clerk slash register.
The board chair and clerk slash register to sign the separation and release agreement with Jordan Epperson as discussed in closed session.
And then, um, Chair, are you going to, Chair, what else?
Uh, definitely, um, four, uh, A, four A would be five months and four B would be seventy-five thousand, I guess. The, the only definite changes, just, we would be asking if you would like the date any earlier than January one. Yeah.
What is C here where there's seventy-five thousand at play? Liquidated damages, yeah. What is A, eight C?
No, you should pay attention to that one, please.
Just if, if his, if his, you know, comped down, hold on a second. It's just what it says, if his information is released illegally or whatever that is damages, which I'm sure it won't be released. So we've moved on.
So I just want to make sure that we collect all these so that they stay in session.
I'm going to put my name on mine so you can have my-
Are you going to give them to Rachel? So I'm just going to keep these two here.
Me?
Yes.
Maybe the, will you guys take them?
Okay, good. I don't want them. I do not want that. Oh, with a minute to close session, okay.
Did we make a motion that we, yeah?
Roger, our motion to exit closed session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Text.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll post the board chair. Motion requested by Mr. Wolf. To miss, uh-